Welcome. It is Tuesday, July 23rd, 2024. The time is 7:04 PM. I call this meeting to order roll.
Here.
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 Yep.
Here. Next item is approval of the agenda. We are going to add staff reports after item eight and then add committee reports, item 11 on the back. Next item is approval of the consent agenda, the minutes of special meeting of June 19, 2024, and minutes of regular council meeting. July 9, 2024, the bill is dated July 19, 2024, payroll ledger dated July 12. Foundation of county-owned property.
Second.
Session.
Yes.
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 Yes. Next item is citizen comments. Citizens are asked to limit their comments to five minutes. Council will take comments in. Time. Council will not engage in back and forth dialogue, but may respond to a speaker with brief factual information or refer speaker to town manager who arranges. Staff member for discussion of the speech. Over the council has no obligation to engage by either of the foregoing. Give a sign-in sheet. First person I have on here is. Name and address for the record and then I.
Uh, Robert Andrews, 208 Deer Path Road. Um, I was curious about the progress of EV charging. Um, typically in front of 124 story buildings this. Bar used to be. What? Starting a business there and I'd love. Charging there.
Let's connect you.
John, I was talking to John. John called me today.
John's right.
Alright, cool. Okay, I'll chat with John. Um, could we any possibility to build a structure in the lake for? Is like, like a concrete structure that we could keep ice out of? I would even help keep the ice out of it. I would just love to be able to get in the water in the winter.
Getting hard now from the back, but I think that's an interesting idea.
Yeah, we're allowed to swim.
Where there's a will, there's a way.
Yeah, I mean, like make people sign a waiver or something and own risk, but.
They did it up in North Park, did at least.
Yeah, but I'm thinking of something permanent that.
I don't. You can't.
They can. They changed the law. You can swim up to your, you have to touch your feet. You're allowed to go out until your feet touch.
But you can wade in it.
Can wait.
You can't swim.
I'm jacking.
Okay. Wait, okay.
Well, so I mean, it, we can look into it, but I, I think the answer is probably no one.
Okay, but maybe some, some way we could still.
Maybe like the ice fishing operation.
Oh, like drill, yeah, just like have a hole drill out there or something. Okay.
I love the idea.
Okay, yeah, I don't know who I can connect with about that, but I'd love to spearhead that.
Maybe either Craig.
Craig at Marina?
Greg Simpson. Class Jesse Clayfoss. And really.
Jesse who?
Jesse Clayfoss, K L E F O T A.
That's strict.
K L E H F O T A.
Okay, um, yeah, I'll figure it out.
Yeah.
Um, is there any talk about like a further ban, like a further regulations on short-term rentals? You know, like that might be a way to solve the housing crisis. Faster. Um, and maybe potentially like a second homeowner's tax. People just sitting on houses might pitch in a lot more to the community so we can afford. Housing.
That is a conversation we've been.
Like build more hotels and just push them at like, compete them out of the market so that it's not. Okay, that's all I had to say. Hot yoga studio? Well, I'm a massage therapist. Um, so I'll have my own private massage studio and/or like a couple of people and a hot yoga studio.
Pain building?
What?
In the pain building?
Pain building? No, 124 Main, the one, the ugly one with the stairs on the outside, like the brown and green, the cross in the bowling alley.
And then Rabbi Joel Schwartzman. If you would state your name and address.
Oh, yes, oh, yes. Rabbi Joel Schwartzman. I live at 220 East Lebante Street. Here in Dillon. Being a technophobe, I don't know if we have what we talked about about three years ago, town-wide Wi-Fi. We had talked about establishing that and, um, I guess it went the way of the dodo bird. Um, my daddy was a professor at the Hebrew Union College in Cincinnati until he retired. He was the only rabbi, um, successful congregational rabbi to teach at the seminary. And when he and my mother retired, they moved from Cincinnati to Albuquerque, New Mexico. And when they got there, taxes were low. Life was good. Unfortunately, over the years that they lived there, taxes began to rise. And my father began to take greater and greater interest, being a PhD, he was something of a scholar. So he took greater and greater interest in government, especially the government of New Mexico. And he found that the legislators in the, in the New Mexico Legislature. Were actually voting on things that they had interests in. For example, some of them owned land that they wound up voting on. Which is technically speaking and legally speaking, a conflict of interest. Well, he brought that to the attention of the newspaper and was soundly ignored. So was he ignored by the legislators. But he persisted and taxes continued to rise because frankly, these legislators could get away with what they were doing instead of accusing themselves. When they had a stake in the issues that they were voting on, they just kept right on voting. That's a, um, aphorism, so to speak, if you will. I haven't met any of you guys at the farmer's market. I'm assuming that you come on Friday. I haven't met you at the Dillon, um, city market or at REI. So one of these days we'll bump into each other and then we can have a nice conversation. With that, that's it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Oh, and by the way, does anybody know if the district court in Breckenridge is operating during this time of the summer? Or are they on vacation?
I don't know that for sure. My assumption would be that they're operating. Chief, do you know that?
Yeah, I asked him. Ready? And, uh, at least I asked one, but I called today and my taxpayer dollars aren't being responded to, so I got nothing, but I'll continue to try. Thanks.
Good luck. Anybody else here to make a public comment tonight? Alright, moving on to item five, consideration of ordinance number 624, series of 2024, second reading and public hearing of an ordinance amending chapter 13, 13 of the Dillon Municipal Code concerning water and sewer billing to facilitate and encourage paperless billing and payment. It's 713 and the public hearing is open.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. Um, so currently we are sending out about 250 to 300 paper statements a month for water and sewer billing. And this, this change in the code for chapter 13 is looking to encourage paperless billing and encourage electronic payment. And basically we're doing the same thing as, you know, we're proposing to do the same thing as other towns, Breckenridge, Frisco, Silverthorne. They all have similar fees for sending out paper statements and for accepting paper checks. And, um, you know, we actually rent a paper folder. Um, it's a machine. It's just, we're renting it for $300 a month. And we could save money. We could save labor hours, significant labor hours that we can allocate differently. So, um, this is basically to improve workflow, to increase sustainability and go paperless. And, um, we're just following suit with other towns and, um, we, we expect that this will take a few months to roll out because we'll want to make sure we communicate it well to the residents. So there are no surprises. So we're actually anticipating starting this around January 1st. Um, and, you know, including flyers, colored flyers in with the paper statements. And we'll work with residents and property managers to make sure that we can get them, you know, signed up for paperless billing easily through express bill pay. So we're just asking council's consideration for this and we think it's, it's the way of now. And, uh, we just want to move paperless, sustainable and also save time for the staff. I'm certainly happy to answer any questions.
Since the public hearing, I'll open it up to the public now. Then we'll go to questions. Um, Robert, you also signed up for this, to speak on this one. Was that in error? We're just encouraging people to sign up for paperless, paperless billing.
Paperless billing for water and sewer bills, monthly water, water and sewer bills.
Did you have something to share with us or?
No.
Okay.
And encouraging.
But just getting.
Electronic payment as well, not paper checks or cash.
Is anyone else here from the public to make a comment on this? Any questions for Mary Kay?
I have a question. I am automatically paying it, but I still get a paper statement. So can I just stop?
Uh, yeah, you can do it through express bill pay. You can opt out of your paper statements. And if you, and if you have any issues with that, you can just, you know, let us know and we can help you.
Yeah, because I'm already doing.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, you wouldn't be charged then. It's people who were still getting the paper statements.
I have a question. So you would get an email with a bill instead of a paper bill?
Correct, correct.
And we would get something that shows.
Absolutely, absolutely. You would have to sign up for it. You would have to opt out of paper statements through express bill pay.
Okay.
And, uh, we'll have, like I said, we'll have to message this. We don't want anybody saying we weren't communicating this. So no surprises.
Okay, which they send you. So I, so I'm kind of getting, but I don't.
Yeah, you don't need, I think you probably don't need a paper bill and an email.
Cause I definitely would throw it right away.
That's what I do.
Yeah.
I'm just, I'm just gonna call. I'll just try to see if I can opt out.
Yeah.
Cause I think that's great. It's just.
Yeah, and other towns are, have similar fees for these types of things. 10, I think Brex is $10 for a paper statement and $5 to pay by paper check. So, and there's similar fees at the other towns.
Any other questions before we close the public hearing?
Can I just, I'm curious, how many automators do we have in Dillon?
I don't know the answer to that. Maybe I can get some help from the crowd. I don't know the exact answer to that, but we sent, I know we send out 250 to 300 paper statements. And it takes close to eight hours, start to finish for that process to, every month. So it's just, yeah.
But you're saying if we could get a paper statement, we'd be charged.
Correct. If you don't opt out of the paper statement, if you pay by paper check, you would get charged the following month.
Okay, well.
Well, no, part of this is if you pay by paper check, you would get charged as well because there's a processing, you know, time, you know, time commitment for that too. So you could, you could pay electronically, uh, through express bill pay as well. You could pay by EFT or automatic withdrawal every month. Right.
We're just one.
Okay.
I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, yeah, anything paper, paper check, paper bill, we want, we want to encourage people to opt out of that. Right, right.
Then you do that for other people's email?
Well, you know. Yeah, we'd have, that's part of the instructions we could put on the communication flyer, you know, to help people say, hey, check your spam, check your, you know.
And that seems impossible to message to people, this whole thing.
We're gonna try. It's worth it. It's gonna be a war of attrition. Yeah. That's a great idea, actually.
Um, yeah, they do. Any other questions? We'll close the public hearing at 719. Council, any discussion?
Good idea.
Way of the future, home paper list. Hopefully we can go email lists in the future too somehow because emails are just the worst. Um, I would entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 624, series of 2024.
So moved. Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call. Councilmember Tyne?
Yes.
Woods?
Yes.
And Maura?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Mascherera?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item six, consideration of emergency ordinance number 724, series of 2024, an ordinance submitting a ballot question to the electors of the town to amend the town charter to conform the petition signature requirements for town referenda and recalls to the Colorado Constitution. Nathan?
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Well. I'm clear.
I don't really hear you guys, but here it is. Uh, in front of you tonight is emergency ordinance, uh, for a second ballot question on the October 1st, uh, special election. Uh, due to the recent referendum, uh, that was polled, there was a lot of questions pertaining to the percentages needed, uh, and why those were not in line with, uh, the state's requirements. So in front of you tonight, um, this would set a ballot question, uh, to conform with what is, uh, existing in state law. Uh, we're recommending approval of this. We feel that it's gonna help clean up a lot of the comments, uh, that we received pertaining to the referendum question of which we really couldn't, uh, tell them what was accurate or not because of this discrepancy. And, uh, the way that we look at it in terms of, uh, staff right now is if we're in between the two different, uh, percentages, uh, there's a, a, a great possibility that if this were to happen again, it would get tied up in the court process, which would further take additional time and additional money. So our approach to this is to fix, uh, what we have in the charter, uh, with this ballot question. Um, so it can be accurate and we can move forward. Any questions for me? And I know Adrian's been involved in this too, so, uh, she, she might be available as well.
So approving this tonight would put it on the election for the people to vote on? Is that right? Do I understand?
That's, that's correct. Our, our cutoff date is, or August 1st for the October 1st deadline. Uh, since we are already paying for that special election, we felt that we should, uh, take care of this as well.
Questions for Nathan or Adrian?
That makes sense to me. We just want to be consistent with the Colorado law.
Great. Um, council, any further discussion? I would entertain a motion, um, approving emergency ordinance number 724, series of 2024.
Don't move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call. Councilmember Tyne?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Woods?
Yes.
And Maura?
Yes.
Mascherera?
Yes.
Great. Put it to the people. Item seven, considerate, thanks Nathan and Adrian for work on this. Item seven, consideration of resolution number 4424, series of 2024, a resolution approving the town council ru- rules of conduct. Nathan?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. As directed at the last, uh, work session, uh, we made the necessary, uh, changes to the document and have brought for the resolution number 44 dash 24, series of 2024, uh, for your approval tonight.
Great. Thanks for getting those changes on there. Um, anyone have any questions or have any, anything else that popped out on you? Discussion? Well, this is a good reminder and maybe we can start getting, um, thanks for sending that earlier this week about, um, there was some sort of educational opportunity that you mailed out. So it's good to keep those at the forefront and um, hold us to these, this code of conduct that we're gonna sign off on here tonight. I would entertain a motion to approve resolution 4424, series of 2024.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call. Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Tyne?
Yes.
Maura?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Mascherera?
Yes. Thanks, everyone, for your work on that.
Um, item eight, review of future council agendas. Does anybody have anything that they want or put out there for discussion?
I have two things. Two things, as we're motoring along. Can I talk about it a minute? Okay, um, I, so Prince Hill's been interested in doing a block party and for a couple of years, and then we finally got around to doing it. And then when I advised, um, kept them. Yeah, I wanted to do it, then he told me that there's a special permit required. And so then I talked to Nathan about that. And he said that, um, he didn't know because no one's ever done this before. So, uh, we clearly don't have a policy for neighbors or HOAs or communities within the community to have a block party. So it seems to me simple enough, but we did, um, the, the HOA president submitted a special use permit. But Nathan said to me when we had lunch that he wasn't sure whether the council would go along. So I want to talk to you guys about whether you think that this is a good thing for the town of Dillon to have people to have block. And even, you know, what would the cost be, like even limited maybe? If there's costs from Dillon employees to help this project happen, like somebody's dragging out.
So are you, are you asking to, if like we're interested in having staff take a look at this and kind of see what other communities do?
Okay, like, um.
I, I imagine staff would do a little research and see what other towns do and kind of present us with, this is how other communities handle it if they.
Okay.
Do that kind of thing.
So, yeah, so, I mean, there's girls in the community not knowing that there was a special use permit required have already solicited the date and everything else. So I mean, it's ticking. That's why I want to get it on the agenda. So that Nathan, we could guide him in his decision whether or not to approve the special use permit.
I'll just say, I think that's a great idea, you know? Our first house that we bought in Oceanside, California was on a cul-de-sac at block parties for 4th of July and Labor Day and Memorial Day. And it was a great way for neighbors to get to know each other, for the kids to play together, put up a volleyball net. Friendly competition. It was really good for the neighborhood to do that.
Okay, so maybe we'll, um, so Nathan, are you hearing that? Maybe on a future agenda, we can get sort of a staff opinion on what other communities are doing and how they handle this to sort of start, uh, form, formulating something that could work for the town, for Dillon.
Yeah, we can bring that back. I, I think the biggest issue here is that we don't have a fee schedule, uh, to rent out any of our equipment, people, trucks, et cetera. We also don't have a policy either. So, uh, we'll do some research and try to bring something back.
Yeah, let's work on the policy and see what we can come up with for something reasonable. Right? So you can't, you can't do it in.
Well, we have to close this, you know, we have to close this.
Like if you didn't.
Oh, so you need blockades to close the street?
Yeah. Like, we could, on that, on that drive, there's a loop. So it's easy enough that we just, people that are closed in agree and then the people on that side can go this way.
Right.
People on this side.
If you didn't have. Right? You know what I mean?
I don't know.
Just gather in the streets?
No, and then there was also like.
Yeah, we talked. Just earmuffs, chief.
Well, I was talking about. Do your most severe.
Oh.
The special use.
Yeah.
Here for the, um, fee schedule for some of the town. Stuff like that. There's no fee schedule. That is a, kind of were bigger pieces of that. Start blocking a. Right, before. That's what it's not. Certain processes. The matter of law through the process.
If they were in their yards and not in the street, if they're on private property, they could do that.
So the interesting thing in our revenue. They'll have to actually put them.
Really?
Do you need a liquor license? Just bring your own and you're on your own property?
If you close the street and you're occupying the street, answer.
You can do whatever you want on your own property.
So we're prepared to cancel this event if it doesn't work out.
Can you just move it onto your yard? So just like not have the street included or like you go to that yard or that yard and not just.
I mean, probably.
Seems like the answer is if you don't use the street, you don't really have a problem.
Sure. I'm just suggesting that we consider having a policy. Black parties are cool. First year probably wouldn't be that many people, but the whole neighborhood has 160 houses and.
So let's look at what other communities do and kind of see if that's, if it's worth having a fee structure or whatever. Um, you said you had two things.
Yeah, so the second thing is, um, as you know, we're, we are doing, uh, yeah, a sponsorship person, innovative marketing. That's raising sponsorships where we have theater and having some success. And I know. Like, for example, Jack Daniels was interested in. I think, but she also told me that you know, I used to have like hospitality, some of the things we talked about before, hospitality, tenants, VIP tents. So came across this company that does all that stuff. It sets up tents and matter of fact, they're gonna be down doing all the hospitality for the upcoming golf event in Denver. W Classic. But I, I was talking to Nathan about this several months ago. He suggested that he had it on the public record. Oh, what I'm asking is that we invite a person up here to talk about what we could do hospitality wise at the amphitheater in a temporary basis where they're. This is the company. What the company does is they do temporary, so like when they set up hospitality tents at a golf course, obviously as soon as they. Which I think is something that we could explore to give our hospitality person something to sell. So I understand that Jack Daniels people want some special perks for $25,000 a year. Cheats. That people that pay, I want for my. So what I'm asking is, or what I'm seeing is if you guys are interested in exploring some of these options for amphitheaters so that we can successfully.
Are you talking about like for private events, something they could?
No, like just, uh, so like, say if, uh, Jack Daniels were the sponsor of the whole season. I want to have eight VIP tickets that they want.
Like we have, how we have beer sponsors? Isn't it New Belgium or something?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know what they're asking for.
I think, I mean, I don't, theater people do all these contracts. Don't we have, like, I think we have people, like, I don't know, I don't know what to even call them, beer people, beer companies we use.
So like, um.
I don't know, Jack Daniels is one of them, but.
Like, no, I mean, I think Jack Daniels thing is something that's. So like if we could put tents somewhere to make VIP guests feel more like VIPs, that's what I want to explore. Then if we could get the sponsorship person to say what she needs, how her sponsorships would pay for the stuff. That's something that we, but I think we need next season now so that if she's gonna run around and sell, sell things, sell corporate, you know, what are they getting? We have to decide. We have to decide now so she can sell it. Is that okay for you guys if we invite a representative from this company to come and talk to?
I would think she'd talk to Jesse first or?
I would like to see what the options are, because we don't want Jesse making policy.
But, well, this isn't policy. This is like hiring someone to do a job that Jesse's kind of already doing, I think.
Well, I don't know. I think if you're deciding to have VIP tents and giving access to the sponsors, that's policy decision. I would like to see what the options are, to see what these guys could do and what things, range of possibilities are.
Yeah, I think we should.
One more, and the good thing about this is that they're not consultants. It seems like Town of Dillon is always hiring consultants to tell us what we should do. We have to pay them for that. This guy will come and tell us for free. You could instead of paying the money for the information, you can pay the money for setting up tents. I would think that we'd start small. And I'm hoping if we can do this, and we might even get invited down to the BMW Classic in Denver to see what they do.
Um, I, I just don't want to be like wasting anyone's time, you know, like, because we did that assessment at the amphitheater, and I think the next step is still gonna be, we need more bathrooms and space to do anything else. You know, so like, maybe we're jumping the gun on it, and maybe we try to get that, the amphitheater or the bathroom and space upgrade done, and then figure out how to program that extra space and capacity we have.
It can hurt to hear.
From my limited understanding, this is part of what the sponsors are trying to negotiate. So we would need to know what the options are during that negotiation, which is happening right now.
She has a three-year contract, so can't, she's trying to do it now. I think we ought to give her let's have her come, I would suggest, let's have her come in and tell she's told me and having a beer, but she told me what she needs, but I think she'd tell all of us things and their vision whether or not to entertain that. But she has a three-year contract and she wants to do it now.
Tents like meaning?
Yeah, like.
That's what we need.
I know, we do.
You like the golf course, the top right one there? Golf course, either one of those tents is a they brand occasions on. They can invite their guests.
That would be.
That's the way it happens in golf courses.
Like super skeptical, skeptical that we have the space for this kind of thing. Like, I'm just thinking about the tents we put up there, and they are twelve the size of like even those ones on, up on the golf course, you know?
Well, maybe the, the old person could go visit the amphitheater and get a tour and see what available spaces we do have and what would work, what we've got.
And again, like with Jesse, yeah, like that doesn't seem like that's at our level. Why don't you connect her with Jesse and just start that conversation there so they can see if there's any synergy or something?
Because I don't tell Jesse that we face
Not important. This, that, like, doing something I guess wouldn't be important to me unless Jesse was like, oh, we need this.
I would like to be, I would like to be involved in how we do this instead of how staff decide how we do.
Would they be in? For the food? And so?
You know, I mean, these people, this is the, the largest, uh, temporary facility company around, and they would have to tell us. Maybe it wouldn't work, but maybe it would. A person is interested in having a dialogue with them.
I think we should listen.
But the person they talk to is Jesse, right? Like, and it's, this is not a policy thing. Jesse's in charge of, Jesse and her staff are in charge of this, and like, we can have her talk to them and see what works, but we're not the ones making decisions about the day-to-day operations of the amphitheater.
No, but this is policy.
I think it's policy because we're deciding whether or not to have VIP tents make that a part of the negotiating process with the sponsors.
Have the people been to our amphitheater and taken?
I don't, no, that would be good to have.
So I would say that would be the first step, is see if it's even.
Well, we could do that in the same thing, same time.
So I wanted to invite this company up and that maybe it'd be better to get this on the public record. Have a conversation.
I'm, I'm okay with it. I think.
I think we ought to put it on the agenda because I, I would like to be more involved in the future direction of the amphitheater. We're not talking about day-to-day operations. We're talking about the future direction of things we want to do that we're not currently doing.
I always say no. I always say no.
Okay. Um, all right. Anything else for the future agendas list? Uh, Stafford's, we had a Marina, we did not have a Marina director's report from Craig, who's not around. Jesse's not here. What's that? Great. And Mary Kay, finance director before Kate.
Thanks, Madam Mayor and Council. So I'm just gonna give you some of the highlights of the Q two, uh, financial report. The revenues are ahead of twenty-three by about eight hundred and twenty-seven thousand, and that, most of that is because of increases in concert ticket proceeds and the number of concerts of, over last year. And there has also been an increase to concessions revenue over last year, which is great for paid and unpaid shows. Um, expenditures for the general fund are at, um, just over half of the budget, um, and up two point two million or thirty-two percent over twenty-three, and all departments have had increases, um, over twenty-three because of, um, budgeted raises. And for the water and sewer fund, um, you know, operating costs are above twenty-three because of salary increases again. Marina fund, uh, the revenues have an increase of about a hundred and sixty-one thousand over twenty-three, and a lot of that was, most of that was because of the fee increases that were approved for twenty twenty-four by council. And, uh, sales tax, May, May sales tax is down, uh, just over twelve thousand dollars, uh, or two point, uh, two percent. And a year to date, it is down a hundred and seventy-eight thousand or four point four percent. And, uh, the, the good story here is that we're still favorable to budget. Okay, so we're still within budget, and the half, half of the year is through, but we're gonna be, we're keeping an eye on this and, uh, watching the trend here. We did budget for, uh, eight percent decrease in sales tax from twenty-three. Um, lodging for hotels, uh, the sales tax is down, uh, six point one percent for May, and year-to-date mail, May's hotel sales tax is down, um, about thirty-six thousand or about thirteen percent. And restaurants are down for May, eight and a half percent, and year-to-date, they're also down, uh, six percent. Retail, uh, sales tax is up two point four, four percent for May, um, but it's down year-to-date about twenty-eight thousand or one and a half percent. And as far as areas of town, um, Dillon Ridge, Anemone, and online sales and other areas of town are all down. Uh, the only area of town that is up is the town center, and that's up seven percent year-to-date or twenty-four thousand. And lodging tax, uh, collection is up for May, um, so about eighteen thousand dollars. And, uh, year-to-date lodging tax and excise tax is up a hundred and forty thousand over twenty-three. However, lodging tax itself is down, but excise is up because we didn't start excise tax until July one of twenty-three. Uh, I'm certainly happy to answer any questions for you.
Where do we stand on the budget? Since we're, tax revenues are down, what, what do we need to shift around to make it all work?
Yeah, we're, we're gonna be really diving into, you know, projecting revenue for the budget very soon here. Um, we have a budget calendar already, uh, slated, and we'll be presenting to council and discussing with council the budget over the next couple of months here. So we're gonna have to, you know, develop our methodology of how we're gonna look at the tax revenues and see, see what we're going to do.
What's our total shortfall of what we thought we would be at budget-wise?
Um, we are at, we're favorable to budget year-to-date, um, but we are down from twenty-three. So, let's see, I just, let's see.
Favorable to date means we're over what we estimated we would have?
Correct. Favorable to budget year-to-date. Yes, but we, like I said, we are down from twenty-three.
But it looks like the excise tax is helping us and the
Yes.
Tax.
Yes, and the increase in the, um,
In the rental.
This, yeah, the sales tax from two to four percent.
So that's the rent, for term rentals that helps.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm. Yeah, so we'll have to, uh, really consider, be conservative with our revenue, and, you know, we'll bring it to you and, you know, talk about our approach and how we're going to budget for twenty-five.
Thinking about?
Of course.
We need.
Absolutely. Yes. Yeah, we'll, we'll think about it. We'll talk about it internally, and we'll bring it to you and, um, you know, get your feedback as well.
We had a conversation at the Northwest Cog meeting a couple weeks ago about a vacancy tax, and I know we'd sort of talked about that a little bit. We sort of edged into that conversation, but I get the impression we're actually below what a lot of communities will tolerate for lodging and excise tax. Do you think it'd be worth us exploring another valid question to increase those again?
Possibly. Um, you are already at a, just under twenty percent.
I know, but a lot of
Lodging tax.
Higher in tolerating.
Yeah, we just raised that point.
Yeah, that's, uh, you're, you're the highest in the county, I believe, and, um, you know, so yeah, so that's, that's something to consider, um, if that's affecting, um, the vacancy rates here. And if people are going up the road to Keystone, I, I mean, I don't know how sensitive people are to it, but we can certainly explore that.
There's two ways out of this, right, to increase revenues. You can either have development and attract businesses and have more tax revenues, increase business, or you can increase taxes and let
And then, yeah, that.
Continue to deteriorate.
And if you keep increasing taxes, that people might get more and more sensitive to that increase and notice it even more. You see a twenty percent
activity.
Tax bill on your, you know, your rental. That might get you noticed.
And I don't know if you can answer, because I don't know how free you are, I'm helping the short-term rental, rentals, but have our licenses gone down because?
Well, we have seen a decline in short-term rental licenses, and one thing we are looking at is, um, really establishing a more robust enforcement policy and, um, approach. So we're, we're actively looking at that right now, and, um, I think that could help this process.
Any other questions?
Guys, don't forget the transfer tax, because it's like a closing type of.
Well, it can't, we can't like even consider a transfer tax. It would have to only be an opt-in for a developer or for a homeowners association or whatever.
Right.
Which is, yeah. It's about, we didn't do it before. Better. I don't know about the nature of it. I've never heard of it.
I think it actually could probably do it.
I don't know. I shouldn't comment on that, but yes, a developer and the developer. Great. Thanks, Mary Kay.
Thank you.
Uh, Nathan, if you're still on there, town managers update?
Uh, nothing additional to add. I do, I do want to mention that Big Boy, uh, was scheduled to play tonight at the amphitheater. His plans have changed, uh, so we are dealing with that. There's a lot of, uh, animosity out there. People want, uh, tickets refunded, et cetera. Uh, however, we are able to find a, a separate artist to open for Trombone Shorty tonight. So, uh, if you hear anything, that's, that's what that's about.
Big, Big Boy was the opening band? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, Big Boy's an artist. Uh, it's Big Boy, and I forget the other guy's name, but they, uh, have a group called Outcast. It's, uh, like a hip-hop group from Atlanta, Georgia. They're supposed to open up for Trombone Shorty, and, uh, he couldn't make it up here because of his flight. Uh, his flight was canceled, very similar to one of our council members, uh, with the whole crowd strike, uh, deal the past couple of days. That's all I have.
Questions for Nathan? Mayor's update. I was at the Northwest Cog meeting, but of course I left all my notes from several meetings. I did, I left my mayor's manager's notes too, at home, everything. Um, but basically, oh, so for mayor's managers, the school district is sort of finalizing their bond question. And I had the handout to share with everyone, and I must have just left it at my house. Um, but basically, they've sort of narrowed in on what they want to ask the community for, for the school district, and they have some super cool plans. One of them is sort of changing the, they call, I think they're calling it the pathways. And basically, like, offering more ways for kids to get an education through the high school that will allow them to stay in Summit County, sort of like tech jobs, or like, I don't mean tech, I mean, like mechanic and like bike mechanic and like sort of jobs that you could like make a living in Summit County doing. Um, and with that, they want to build, they want to move the Snowy Peaks High School onto the regular high school campus and sort of incorporate that into like the tech school. To me, it sounds super cool, but they do this, like, bond question is a huge lift. So, um, I will try to get that, get them, get something to send out to you guys, so you guys about it and be talking about it, because it's gonna be a question for our community that could be really great for our school district, so, um, but it's a lot of money that they want. And, but they break it down. It's something like you would pay an additional eighty dollars, and if you have a million-dollar home, you pay an additional eighty dollars a year in taxes or something like that. So it's not a ton of money for each of us, but it would be a ton of money for the school and sort of provide a lot of things that, that they're, where they see gaps. So and then I missed the bulk of the Northwest Cog meeting, but I was there for the second half.
Well, there's a couple of things I was gonna mention, just, um, we're getting ready to apply for, to um, on, on behalf of our region, two pretty big grants in line with what we talked about the work session. One is a it's, I don't know all the details, so, but I know that one is for an EV charging stations, like for, and that involves like Summit County, Eagle County, Garco County, maybe even more counties. Um, and then the other one is for a, it's for like, it's through the Colorado Energy Office, and it's for like a passivity building grant that Northwest Cog will be the applicant on, and it's for, like, potentially, I think it could be, I don't know for sure of all the details, but like, it could be a person at Northwest Cog possibly that could be, uh, like a point person for like the new, um, like building codes that all the, you know, communities are trying to enact to be energy efficient, because that's a really big barrier to, you know, understand all the ins and outs, and, and it would be kind of in line with like our elevator program, so that every jurisdiction would not have to have their own specialized elevator inspector, but that this person or people are not really sure what it's gonna look like, um, could be that point person for that. So those are two big grants that Northwest Cog is, um, going to be applying for in the next month, and it's on behalf of the Cog Region.
And that would be a great thing for the community to have that person that like understands the code and like it's not all different codes and sort of having, I don't know.
Yeah, just like very similar to the elevator.
Great, thanks, Rachel. Any other council member comments or committee reports?
Um, I have a comment. I, you know, the whole finance thing that MK, um, presenting, you know, we're kind of in a tricky situation now because we do have shrink tax revenue, and I think, I'd like us all to be mindful that we're the financial stewards for Dillon. And the decisions we make about various projects, you know, we need to consider more than just do we want that building there. We need to consider the financial dimensions of that, and I, I feel like we're currently experiencing the fallout from the decisions that have been made in the past, you know, ten or fifteen years by previous town councils that blocked a lot of development or didn't encourage it, and I think, you know, we're at the point now where we probably need to reverse course, or our financial situations is gonna continue to deteriorate.
To me, it's not, I mean, I know that was your comment, and thank you for your comment, Councilwoman Christensen, but we were, uh, we were planning on being down eight percent, and we're only down four percent. So for me, that's not dwindling. It's a, it was a planned it was a planned, it's gonna be lower because these businesses are closed, so we, we were anticipating being down, and we're actually above what we were anticipating being down. So for me, that's not dwindling. That's actually better than expected. So there's just like a different way to look at it. Any other council member comments or committee reports? Any other council member comments or committee reports?
Um. I'll have something, you know, everyone knows that I've been dreaming about this in a lot of vote shows. So I reached out to the um. Kind of doing this as a Summit County citizen as well. Reached out to the Colorado Marina Dealers Association to see just initially whether they would be interested in perhaps. Doing a vote show one of these summers. And. They said yes. So they, they said that they're going to, they're Dealers Association's agenda for August. And we'll see because if they're not interested in doing anything, happen. But. Colorado Boat Marina Dealers have one vote show a year. It's down to January. So six months later, it would be perfect. And vision this and I'm working with, I, I talked to Eric Huddy, he says like.
Samuel? Samuel?
So Eric, Eric, I talked to Eric about it. He's semi-onboard. Nina Waters is happy to do it, but. We've, we've never really worked with the county and other, other towns and ventures, have we? Is there, is there a way, a method to do this?
An IGA and we do a lot of them.
It was an.
Intergovernmental agreement.
Oh.
But I think what John is saying is that, um, and I, gosh, I took a leadership course in 2012. And we spoke back then about how all of this separated and it'd be great to have more operation with the county and stuff. And so. Yeah, we do IGAs, but I, I think that's something we all work on. Because I know, um, I can't remember Martinez, I think he said that, because I learned a lot. It was um, just through a real estate. Class that I did and I went through that whole program and I think that's always been a problem. Together and I think that's a great, great idea, John. And I think we should, we should all try to collaborate, um, whether the. Just on helping rounds. So that's my opinion and um. And I just want to say also, I think this meeting went really well. I think everyone's got their, they all followed the code of conduct and. You know, we may disagree with each other, but it's good to agree to disagree and everybody has a. So I think it went really well and I just wanted to put that out there.
Let me, can I finish one more thing? I didn't add this before. So we were talking about the need for the county, everybody that has kids in this county want an indoor athletic facility, right?
We, they talked about that. We talked about this like eight years ago and they did a 200 and something thousand dollar study and nobody was interested in doing it.
It wasn't eight years ago. It was when I was on.
So it's six years.
It was like, well, it was after.
It was a while ago.
So I think the budget thing is a big ass, but if we had like a big target, fundraising for. Something like that that would benefit everybody, that that all our communities, I would want to call this the Summit County vote show and. Eagle County jealous of this.
Is that like on the water?
Yeah.
Risk of Marina and Dillon Marina.
But about Keystone Convention Center, I would imagine if it, it's a big ass, so.
Yeah, coordinate it.
Yeah.
Get it done. Yeah, I remember it used to be a county event city that they got together and all the different. Staff members of each town and. Other and tried to coordinate.
Their events team. I think they still do that in the summers and they try to not like, you know, if you're doing a concert in the morning, they'll do one in the afternoon. I, I think they do still.
That might be the, talk about that.
Proper forum.
Well, even if we can't do it next summer, but like to have one, some, it would be only in one or two shows in Colorado. Situation.
And on the marina, I think it's an excellent, I, I'd help anyway.
Okay, thanks.
Um, any other council member comments or committee reports? Next, I move into go, to go into executive session, an executive session pursuant to sections 34A1 of the Town and Dillon Home Rule Charter and CRS. Sections 24, 6402, 4E for the purpose of determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations. And or instructing negotiators under CRS section 24, 6402, 4E and specifically to discuss negotiations regarding the town attorney position. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Call call. Yes, Member Woods?
Yes.
And Maura?
Yes.
Time?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Mascherera?
Yes.
He's going to be online.